Human rights. It's America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Victor, would you lead us in here, please?
Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, asking that you will do your perfect will in this place. We ask for your grace and your mercy. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Call, please. You need a?
Councilor Howard.
Here.
Councilor Locke.
Here.
Councilor Lorenz.
Here.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A form is declared.
Any modifications to the agenda?
Uh, yes, sir. There is one modification to the agenda. I'd like to add J two resolution twenty twenty three sixteen economic development incentives.
I had to do it to add.
Mexico.
Economic incentives to the agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to add J two resolution twenty twenty three dash sixteen economic incentives. Is there any discussion? You need a?
Councilor Howard.
Yes.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the modification to the agenda adding J two resolution twenty twenty three dash sixteen. Resolution for economic development incentives.
Approval consent agenda minutes or regular meeting from November sixteenth twenty twenty three and a re- review and approval of accounts payable.
So move. Second.
Been moved and seconded to prove the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meetings from November sixteenth twenty twenty three. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Sorry.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Citizen comments and special presentations. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit to comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Anybody wanting to say anything? Got three minutes. Okay, we'll go to scheduled appearances then. In order to be on this included in this portion of the agenda, you have file appropriate. Form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So we will go with waste management rate increase.
Curtis, can you hear us?
I could hear you now. Sorry, I was getting off on mute. I apologize for that. Good evening, council members. Uh, Curtis Gardner, Public Sector Solutions Manager for Waste Management. Um, I believe what you have in front of you is a rate increase um, letter. Um, as well as a contract extension uh, request and um, just want to talk a little bit about. Um, some of the costs that we're seeing in our industry and and why unfortunately CPI um, is not keeping up with that. Um, so as you probably are aware, um, labor has become especially expensive in our state. Um, and part of that labor in- increased labor cost, uh, CDL drivers are in such high demand. Um, in addition, we've had to introduce um, much higher driver pay. As well as new driver benefits in order to hire and retain our drivers. Um, one of the new uh, driver benefits that we introduced last year. Was we now pay for four-year university for any of our drivers or their families. Um, and that's, that's just one example. And so we've seen um, significant increases in labor costs. Um, beyond that, um, fuel costs have increased as well. Um, both uh, natural gas as well as diesel. Um, and diesel um, really uh, and gas is involved in everything that we do. So whether it's the. Um, rubber tires of our trucks, the fuel that fuel our trucks, the plastic for the plastic resin in our containers. Um, and on and on, most everything that we um, we do has seen significant uh, cost increases. And so. Um, th- this year, Waste Management um, introduced a new pricing structure um, that. Use utilizes what's called an energy surcharge. And the energy surcharge is nice because it'll, it fluctuates with the cost of fuel. And why that's good for the city is because instead of the old method, we, we used to charge fuel surcharges where every month. You paid um, a higher amount. Now the energy surcharge fluctuates up and down with the cost of fuel. And so um, to talk a little bit about how we proposed your adjustments for this year. Uh, we took current rates, we applied the CPI increase, which gave you your base rate. And then from the base rate. Uh, we subtracted back out to a new final rate. Um, so currently for um, and I'll just use the, the curbside uh, one container is kind of the base of the conversation. Current rate. For a uh, curbside container is twenty one eighty-two per month. The CPI increase on that, the contractual CPI increase is a dollar sixteen, bringing the new base rate to twenty-two ninety-eight. And so to account for the energy surcharge, what we do is we back down. Uh, the new final rate. So the new final rate will actually be twenty dollars and seven cents, so lower than what you're currently paying now. And then we allow the energy surcharge on top of that. And again, why the energy surcharge is nice is because it, it allows the city to see lower cost bills. In months where uh, the price of fuel goes down. Um, while there have been some reductions, uh, the, the, the rate of inflation has slowed down some this year. Um, as, as you all know, because I'm sure you're seeing it in public works and in other city departments. Uh, we're still seeing significant uh, cost increases, inflationary cost increases. And so this allows us to capture those when the cost of fuel goes up and when the cost of fuel goes down, uh, the city sees a lower rate. Um, and so that is what I have to go over on this letter and uh, happy to answer any questions.
So on the uh, energy, this is uh, Councilor Howard. On the energy surcharge, do you have a sense of what that might be, let's say for last month?
Um, so it fluctuates every month, but I believe last month's energy surcharge uh, was around seventeen percent. Um, and so what we do with the rate is we back, we take your, your final rate. And then we backed out fifteen percent from that rate. And so what you're, the net result to you is only an inner uh, a surcharge of two percent. And if fuel continues to trend downwards. Um, we, we've seen some months where it's gone up recently, but also some months where it's gone down. Um, if you get below that fifteen percent cushion that we build into the rate. Uh, you will see a lower base rate than um, what we've proposed on your, on your price sheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Gigi.
This is Gigi Dennis. So on that, in your letter, you also wanted to extend your franchise until twenty twenty eight.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So we, um, and I believe um, that there's a, the contractual provision allows for. Um, a four-year increase. And so we, I mean, it's a, it's a mutual um, agreement. And so we, we would, we enjoy servicing the town and. Um, I believe we do, uh, we provide good service and um, as far as I'm aware, I think the city's been happy with the service we're providing. And so. Um, we, we would like to extend um, through the end of the original um, contractual agreement.
And then I don't know that this is a fair question to ask you right now, but. And you have, you have been very good to this, to the town, and we appreciate the service Waste Management provides. I haven't seen that you guys have been that great of a corporate partner within our city and helping to sponsor events and such.
No, I appreciate that, that feedback. And I think that's uh, this is definitely inappropriate form to do that. And. Um, you know, I think what I can say is. Um, I am more than happy to, you know, if, if the city makes me aware of opportunities for sponsorships. So. We, we do sponsorships and um, events and, and things like that all across the states in which we operate, which, you know, is all fifty states, but for me, for Colorado. Um, my, my territory is Colorado. And so um, you know, I am more than happy to find, to partner with ways, whether it's community organizations. City events um, and things like that, uh, that, that's something we, we do all the time. And so certainly happy to. Um, participate in those events and would love to work with you and your staff to, to find those. And then in, in additionally, if there's. Any uh, nonprofit partners or community organizations that need um, sponsorships or things like that. Um, we are certainly willing to participate in those as well.
Uh, that is terrific to hear. Is there um? You know, the one thing that immediately comes to mind. That we can discuss later, but the, the city runs a, a state licensed after-school program. And um, we always need support for our kids.
Yeah, um, that, uh, those types of uh, programming, uh, we are always supportive of. So yeah, I would love to hear. Um, kind of your thoughts on how we can support that, whether it's financially or other ways, um, right? You know, there's. A lot of ways we can support things, but financially is, is the most often is what, what's most often helpful. Um, so you, yeah, you know, let's have that conversation about how we can support that or any other um, programming. But yeah, the, that we, that sounds like something we certainly could support.
Awesome. And we do appreciate your support for our Monovista cleanup days. So thank you for that.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions? So based on it's a four-year. Oh, I guess my question would be, or like, will we plan on seeing you in a year? With thoughts of increases again, or is this gonna tie it up for the next four?
Well, so the, the, the contract has a provision for um, CPI increases. And so that, that happens every year. Um, but putting this energy surcharge in there will eliminate the need to do, um, you know, kind of. Extraordinary requests outside of what's inside the contract. That's why this is a good. Um, way to do that, because again, it, it'll take care of if we continue to see extraordinary increases in the cost of fuel, because. Like I explained, fuel really drives everything that we do. Um, at the end of the day, we're a transportation company. And so whether it's our people, our vehicles or our equipment, it all uh, has fuel component into it. And so what this will allow us to do is stick just to um, the contractual CPI increases and not make any additional. Um, price changes outside of what's in the contract. Um, so I think that, you know, why that's nice for the city is because it allows a lot more certainty with budgeting. Um, the CPI increase, the uh, CPI index that we use is typically very stable. Um, it's a lot more stable than. Kind of the, the typical consumer index um, that a lot of you are probably familiar with. That includes like groceries and things like that. Our, our index is a little different and a lot more stable. And so this will allow um, us to stick just with that and give the city a lot more certainty in budgeting into future years.
Thank you, Curtis. Certainly. We go on.
Well, we uh, could authorize the. The manager to execute the contract.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna authorize you to execute the contract.
I will certainly do that.
I make a motion to authorize. The city manager to approve the, or sign the contract, renewing the contract between the city of Monovista and Waste Management. Uh, based on the terms that Waste Management just presented.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to allow the city manager to uh, sign the contract with Waste Management. With the provisions as read. So any more discussion? You need a?
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the Waste Management rate increase. And contract extension authorizing city managers to be those to sign and negotiate the contract.
Very good. Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to present and have a good evening.
Right now. Okay. Discussion on incentive package for development of cobblestone hotel and easing some of the requirements by management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, you'd given staff the recommendation to move forward and talk with. More seriously about potential incentives for the potential hotel. And so uh, working with staff, we have come up with um, a document that you all have, I believe, in front of you. And this is. We've, we've vetted it back and forth with our city attorney. Thank you, Gene, for your help. And um. And with cobblestone folks, and we think that this is, is something that's gonna be. Uh, very favorable as far as helping as we try to put together an investment team for the, for the project. So this is. As you look through this on, on page two, it talks about the certificate of occupancy. That of course has to be issued by Rio Grande County. Um. We have a provision if there was a little bit of a delay. But as far as actually the fees and, and things that we are asking for your consideration, this would be a ten-year package. And so we would. The hotel would still collect the funds and then we would rebate them back. And so it's a ten-year process. So the first five years on the sales tax that they collect just at the hotel. As well as their property tax, we would rebate them back ninety-five percent. And then it would be ratcheted down. Year six, it would be eighty percent. Year seven, sixty-five percent. Year eight, fifty percent. Year nine, thirty-five percent. And then the tenth year, it would be twenty percent. And then after that. Our obligation or partnership in seeing this be a success would be over. There's others, some, also some other in-kind type of things that we'll be doing as far as. Um, getting the water and sewer up within ten feet of the property. And then they have a very own um, plumber. Put in the rest of it. Um. Things like the. Um, assisting with parking lot as far as asphalt goes. Uh, as far for the street side, um, making sure that we've got everything. So that it's a nice entrance if you all decide later to sell the property. In this location out there at Sherman and Sky High. So as far as that process goes, it's still going through planning and zoning. Um, planning and zoning will still have a. Public hearing as far as it being a planned unit development. And they'll make their recommendation. It'll come to you all. We'll have a public hearing specifically as far as that location side. Before you decide if you're selling that property and, and if that's the site location.
So the incentive package we're talking about is really what's commonly referred to nominally as tax income and finance, right?
Correct.
Tip.
No, no, this is not tip.
Well. I mean, essentially it's like that. You're, you're giving up tax to incentivize the project.
That's correct.
And that's a mechanism used by lots of cities and towns. Not just us.
Well, and this is gonna be a little over an eleven million dollar investment by the investors. And so um, at this point, the property is not taxed.
Right.
And with no facility there, there's no sales tax. And so anything that we are bringing in is in addition to what we're currently getting now. It's still being planned as a sixty-two room hotel.
Sounds good to me.
Where is this? Where is the one? Um, it would be located out at Sky High. To complement the event and conference. So with that, I'd like you to, I can read the resolution. That you've got. This resolution then, um, it says a resolution for the Monovista City Council to provide economic incentives for a hotel development. Whereas the city desires to promote the public purpose of encouraging and the expansion of a new bus, of new businesses within the city. And stimulating the local economy by providing new jobs and expanding the tax base. And whereas it is the intent of Cobblestone Hotel Development LLC. A Wisconsin limited liability company for its assigned agency developer. To construct and operate a cobblestone hotel and suites branded lodging facility on real estate located within the city of Monovista. Whereas development developer. Has determined that the overall feasibility of the project requires local incentives. And whereas as an inducement to cause developer to make the required investment in the project, which is expected to result in both the desired job creation. And the development of the real estate. The city has agreed to offer developers certain incentives. Now, whereas in consideration of the foregoing of the mutual promises and obligations of the parties heretofore. And of other good and valuable consideration, the receipt, the receipt and sufficiency of which is hereby acknowledged. It is agreed described in exhibit A as follows. And so that is what we went over as far as being exhibit A. And so um, you know, for public purposes. This is not a done deal, but by having the incentives ahead of time. It helps the, those that are making this sort of eleven million dollar investment. Um, gives them some insurance. Assurance that there is, that the city is a, is a true partner, that um. That we want them to be successful and that we're going to offer this as. A help to get it off the ground.
You want to do that now or you want to get, wait, we get the resolutions?
Uh, yeah, let's do it now. Sorry.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three sixteen. Um, specifying the economic development incentives.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen economic incentives. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Councilor Howard.
Hi.
Councilor Locke.
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen for economic development incentives.
Thank you, Council. Um. Tim Leah Cobblestone will be back in town this next. Tuesday. And so we'll be working with him and have some other folks that will sit down and visit with him and. What you can do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Okay, we'll move to resolutions and I'll do resolution. Two zero two three dash fifteen. Resolution of the city of Monovista updating appendix two dash F fee schedule for the city of Monovista.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so we're gonna kind of tag team. This resolution, um, in your packet is the new resolution with the new prices. Um, I put before you the old resolution with the old prices. So I wanna, I'm not gonna go over every single thing. I just wanna go over the ones that we changed. Um, but I do, we're gonna kind of tag team it. So I'm gonna go over. A few of them and then I'm gonna have Rob go over a few of them and then I'll have Stephanie go over the Sky High fees. Okay? Um, so the biggest changes, um, if you look at the packet that I put in front of you. Yes, that one. So that's the old. Uh, fee schedule. So the first thing we did is we created a new section called utilities. So we took some of the old fees out of finance, out of the water section and out of the sewer section. And we created a new section called utilities. That way, when the customer goes to the fee schedule, they can just go to a section called utilities and they can say, oh, okay, so. For a broken meter, I can see how much it's gonna cost me for a broken meter. If I have to call and have somebody come out and shut my water off. I can just go straight to utilities and see how much that's gonna cost. Instead of having to try to bounce back and forth between finance and water or sewer to try to find it. We try, we're trying to. S- schedule it and localize everything so it makes more sense for the customers to find. When they go to look at the fee schedule. Um, in the new fee schedule, we've also. Redone it so everything's alphabetized. So it's, it goes finance. Planning, everything's alphabetized. Instead of having sewer at the front, water at the back. It's everything's alphabetized. Um, so to start with. On page one. Um. The. The big thing was for annexation and zoning. We went ahead and changed that to a thousand dollars. I'm sorry, that went to nine hundred dollars. That was changed to nine hundred dollars. Um, Board of Adjustments, we took out, we had two lines for Board of Adjustments. All Board of Adjustments are the same thing. Board of Adjustments here, variances. And that's all they hear. So there was no reason to have two different lines. So we took that out and that's four hundred dollars. Fence permits, we did up that to twenty-five dollars. It takes a little bit more time to go out and check. We need to make sure that they meet the setbacks, the height requirement. And same with the site permit. We changed that to thirty dollars because it takes a little bit more time to go out. Um, DJ or planner, he goes out and makes sure that they meet. All the requirements, setbacks. And everything on their site permits. Um, on page two. Uh, the big one there. Was the vacation of public right of way. We changed that to five hundred dollars. And then I am gonna have Rob jump in real quick and explain the bulk water purchase. Because that was a big one that we changed on there.
While Rob's getting up there, under the community development side, a lot of these fees. Um, we took time with staff to talk about each one of these sections. And the challenge has just been the hourly, the amount of manpower it takes. And so they're based more on the time and labor. Than, and the, the whole administration processing side. So. Um, that's why, that's how we came to some of these numbers. So if you think some of them are still too high, we can lower them, but that's what we base. The numbers on.
So on the bulk water, we have two different sources of bulk water that we sell to customers. And we have one right outside of City Hall here that is usually used for people that have tanks less than a thousand gallons. It's basically a yard hydrant that they fill three, four, five hundred gallon tanks with. And take it out to their property and use for water. Um, we also have more of a construction water fill station out at Sky High. That's the little shed that sits out there in their parking lot. And that's usually used by um. Construction outfits that are doing larger projects. Um, Terrabell Soul, their contractor, ACI, when they came in to do that, they would use that. A lot of our um, Excel Energy and some of the utility companies have outside contractors come in. They use that site to get their bore water when they're doing bores. So we've changed that. It used to be fifteen dollars per thousand gallons across the board for everyone. So what we've done is we've modified. Out here to kind of capture a little bit better what we're getting. And we've changed that rate to five dollars per five hundred gallons, I think it is. Well, I'm sorry, five dollars per a hundred gallons per trip. And then out at the, the other side is basically two cents per gallon. Um. For the, for the larger ones. Um, it does create a slight increase for the larger customers. Um, an example that we gave when we were going through this is somebody that got. Is somebody that got thirty four thousand gallons of water from us would roughly pay. Um, as it sits now, about five hundred and twelve dollars for that thirty four thousand gallons. And with the new rates, they would wind up paying about six eighty three. So a little increase, cover some of our costs, try to recoup some of the costs on building that fill station. And also, I mean, our water is getting more and more costly to treat. And, and they are getting treated water, so just to try to cover our costs a little better. We haven't really raised rates on the water side for many years. And as far as the bulk water is concerned, we haven't done that in over a decade. So it's been fifteen dollars per thousand gallons since I've been here.
So then, um. In the new fee schedule, um, when it jumps into the liquor section portion of it. I did go and update all of the liquor licensing costs according to the Department of Liquor Division. Um, with the state of Colorado, so all those prices are updated according to their, um, costs. Um, did not change any of our costs except for. We changed. Um. For clubs. We changed it to two hundred and fifty for an occupational tax. And we went to five hundred for an off premise sale only for occupational tax. Um, we have one club that we charge an occupational tax to, and that would be the Elks. So we went from a hundred to two fifty.
And what's, explain what the class. F three point two sales only is?
The class F three, F three point two sales only is like Safeway. So your, um, Safeway, your convenience stores. Those are your sales only off premises. And then, um, a lot of the, on page two, a lot of the, um. Fin, um, charges under finance, we did move to the utility section. And then the police department, um, we didn't really change anything on the police department, we just reorganized. Theirs fee schedule, so it made better sense. And we added like where it says S X O, so that people would understand what that meant, we put in the full. Meaning that that means sex offender registration, so we just made sure that that was clear. Um, updated the criminal code fees to meet our current code. And then on page six. Of the old, uh, fee schedule, um, on the new one, you'll see where I added. Our current charges for our monthly sewer rates. And then I also added a column where in July, when the new rates take effect. And then the big one, um, and if Rob wanted to come up and explain this too. We also went into the water acquisitions and we updated the water acquisitions and I'll let him explain it.
So, yeah, on the water acquisitions, um. We basically changed a couple of things, and this is actually tap fees, so think of it as tap fees. We went across in the water and the sewer and increased the tap fees. On the sewer side, we did five hundred dollars from fifteen to two thousand. On the water side, we did a little bit of the same type stuff with the same things. Um, we did increase on the three quarter inch to two thousand, that's seventeen hundred is what the current is. So that's a three hundred and we just kind of ratcheted it up accordingly as we went up the scale. The water tap fee and connection fee used to be two separate fees. And we combined them into one, just so people aren't feeling that they're getting completely overwhelmed. And what the, the tap fee and the connection fee, that's the actual physical tap to the water line. Plus our meter pit and meter. Well, that's what those charges pay for. Um, and then, as you can see, they ratchet up based on the size of the meters. Um, the, the monthly rates remain the same, that's something for council I'd like to discuss this year. Let's talk about our rates, we're in a mode of deficit spending and we need to kind of look at that a little deeper. We'd like to take twenty four to kind of look at that, see where we are. And then we did do something in there. And I just wanted to point it out, and this is in the utility section on page six. You'll see at the very bottom of the utilities before it switches over to pest control, a vacant tab.
That's actually on the new.
On the new stock. So this is in response. You've had two, um, times that's come to you this year. For people that has requested a reduction in fees right now, if you have a vacant piece of property. And it has a house on it, you are forced by ordinance to pay the base rates. And that's the full base rates. And as our sewers ratcheting up and possibly even with the water the way it is, it's still really close for somebody having a hundred dollar a month. Of water sewer. So what we decided and what we'd like to present to council is a reduction in those fees. It was discussed here a couple of months ago, a month and a half ago, and council agreed to it for a couple. Um, that has two properties, it still has a house, they don't know what they wanted to do with it yet. So we have a, a, what we're calling the vacant tab. It's a reduction, they pay ten dollars for the water, ten dollars for the sewer each month. It's twenty dollars combined, that keeps their right to those taps li- available. Until they can figure out how they want to redevelop that property. They want to sell it, if they want to provide it to a family member, that's what that's for, um. We did put a caveat, it cannot extend beyond five years. Cuz we don't want to have a bunch of vacant homes just sitting around rotting in properties. We want to have them redeveloped and, and something with, but it would give somebody that. Whose mother passed away or something like that, and they inherited a house, it gives them some time to think about what they're doing. But I'll automatically assume a hundred dollar a month.
So we've got an unmetered tap fee still.
Yep.
Do we have any unmetered taps do we have in the city?
Uh, roughly, there's slightly over about twelve that are still there. Um, and, and some, some of them are a little. Little confusing, there's been some commercial properties that haven't had. Uh, an actual meter, we fixed those for the most part, we've got one, two left. And then we have some residences that we still need to fix and. It's weird, some of them have a well, but they have sewer service, so that's classified as unmetered. Because they won't let us put a meter on the well to see what they're operating. So, so like I said, it's, it's, there's some weird ones that we're trying to work out, but that's gonna take some time and as systems change. We'll have to fix those.
But, and just for the current discussion, I wouldn't think we could do, uh, if you have an unmetered tab, we can't do a vacant.
No.
Vacant fee structure, cuz we have no way of knowing.
Right, yeah, no, this would be for ones that are in good standings with an actual meter. And that would be what we'd do is we'd actually remove the meter. Put the address on it, put it on a shelf, and that way they don't have access to the water system. Yet they still have access to the tap.
Yeah. So you're, you're not taking out the tap, you're just taking out the connection.
Correct.
It's a five year limit. Per site, not customer.
Per site.
Yeah.
Per site, it, it's, it's the way the code's written right now, it's designed to force redevelopment. Um, and I think it's kind of a critical part of our components that we do want to keep, keep seeing properties redevelop. But I also understand the other side of that and. The burdener per, per customers more than we already are, sad.
So then, um, on the new fee schedule, um, a couple of things that you'll see that we've added. Um, under recreation. We have added the recreation fees. So we've added adult sports. And youth sports. And then we have also. Upped the park pavilion, we've added, we've ta- just taken out, it said park rentals in the past. Um, so we've changed that to the park pavilion, cuz that's what we rent is the pavilion. And we changed that price to sixty dollars for four hours and a hundred dollars for all day. Usually the park pavilion, when they rented, they also rent the electricity that they use the electricity that's at the pavilion. And then we also added kids connection. Um, which is twenty dollars a week if they pay on the first of the month. And then if they pay on the first, if they pay after the first of the month, the first Friday. Of each month, then it's twenty five dollars a week. And then if they have a drop in child, then it's six dollars per day. And then on page six of the new one, we added the utility section. And that's where we put in the broken meters, the flow test. Um, the vacant tap fee that Rob just talked about, the pest control, the streetlights and the water disconnect on and on. And. I really appreciate all the department heads meeting with us and pitching in. Oh, yes, we did add one other permit, I forgot. Um, we added on the, um, planning side, we added a burn permit. Um, so that is going to be twenty five dollars a day. For a burn permit and they have to fill it out and get approval from the police department to have that burn permit. And it's only gonna be for agriculture or special events. So they can pull the permit for the ditches, correct? And for agriculture use or for like the bonfire, the schools when they do the bonfire. But we're not going to allow burning of garbage leaves, that type of thing within the city limits anymore. And then with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Stephanie. And let her explain this guy.
Evening, council. Um, so we kind of flipped things on their heads this year for, um, pricing, so bear with me as I go through my new proposals. Um. I guess the first proposal I did was break it down to have a weekday pricing, so Monday through Thursday. And a weekend pricing, so Friday through Sunday. Um, and then under each of those, I have a standard rate and then, uh. Nonprofit or SLV local government, so. Denver County couldn't come in and say, well, I'm a government entity, I want the government rate. SLV local government only. Um, and that's to help get our community more involved and give them a little bit of a discount. Um, the purpose for me breaking it down like that was to get away from some of these discounts. And well, Sally got a discount, how come Joe didn't get a discount? Um, I want it as black and white as possible, what's written down is what happens. The only ones that Gigi and I will work on will be our big six events that have been our annual events for. However, many years we've had them, um, and those are the, really the only ones that'll be getting discounts as well. Um. From there, a couple of other additions, um. The third column over, fourth column, kind of right directly in the middle, that says Sunday through Saturday, um. In there, I would like to add an additional fee. We've had a lot of people that can't quite stick to their contracted timeframe. Um, and it takes them longer to break down than they really think it's gonna do, um, which means at that point, I'm paying my staff overtime. To make sure they get out of the building. Um, though, what I'd like to propose is any events that go over on their time. Um, depending on the space, it has a different fee allocated to it. But they will get charged that additional fee if they cannot get out of the building within their contracted timeframe. Um, and then on the very far right, um, what I would like to propose is a non-refundable cleaning fee. Um, throughout this last year, we have had more and more events that have just left our building completely trashed. Um, and I don't think that our damage deposit is covering that cleaning fee. Um, we're having to spend a lot more time cleaning the carpets, picking up trash out in the parking lots. Um, they're just really leaving it destroyed, um, as a few of you have witnessed and helped me clean up, so thank you for helping us. Um, so on that far right column is gonna be the proposed cleaning fee. Um, in doing a lot more research, I found that a lot of, of any. Event venues do have a non-refundable cleaning fee in addition to a damage deposit fee or a security deposit. Um, we tried to keep the fees fairly reasonable, um, everything did increase. Um, but we tried to keep it at a minimal increase on there. Um. The only one that I would say went up, um, a reasonable amount would be the restrooms only. Um, we were only charging a hundred and fifty dollars to use the restrooms that were on the west end, um, and that didn't even cover our. Fee to pay for our cleaning lady come in and the supplies that it took, so toilet paper, soap, um, cleaning supplies. Um, that didn't even cover our costs, so we did increase that up to two fifty. Per day. Um. Everything else is just add-ons. Um, over the last year, we've done a really good job of finding additional upcharge items that we can rent out to our customers. Um, so we've added things like lights to go over their dance floor. Um, we have finalized, uh, as of today, the epoxy in our showers, so we'll start to be able to rent out our showers, um. Additional services, whether there is water service or coffee service, um, flags, coat racks. A lot of these other things that we can just add on, um, you can go through and I won't bore you with all of those details. Um, and then we did keep a couple of our items complimentary. A lot of the larger event centers do charge for an AV package, so they charge for a microphone, they charge for a projector, they charge for anything like that. Um, we felt at this point that as a community, um, we should keep that as a complimentary item. At this time, we can address that later on if we want to add that as an add-on or an upcharge. Um, but we do have majority of our events that use our AV package, so we felt it was a good community thing to just keep that one there for them. Um. And then the very last one on there, um, is a holiday rate. Um, I'd like to work with council as well as Gigi and come up with, um, specific dates that we just don't allow any events. Um, I eat Christmas Day. Um, or events that we would charge an additional rate or a holiday rate. Um, so we have several events that want to do like a Christmas Eve or an Easter Day, Fourth of July. Um, Veterans Day, anything like that where it's a city holiday, but we're in a vet center. Um, so since it's a holiday, I have to pay my staff double, um, so increasing that was. Um, we would like to increase that one point five percent, just to kind of help out with that price to pay for my staffing. Um, there's a couple of items that are left TBD, um, and that's just as we continue to go, um. Trying to figure out what it's gonna cost to clean the showers before I actually put a charge on that. Um, or once we get the new basketball courts in, figuring out exactly how much time it takes with manpower to put them together before we put a price on that. Questions? Concerns?
The one concern I have. And why we had to address this at some serious level is that. You know, Stephanie's finishing up this year with four hundred and sixty events. And we've got six full-time employees out there now. And can't continue. In talking with other people with venues, they're like, you guys are not charging enough. Because everyone's finding it so reasonably priced. And so I think we need to think about having more quality. Parties for those that want to use the facilities instead of just mass numbers of people in there to fill the rooms. And so we've got to raise the rates, um, we can't, comparing with. With some of the rental venues out of Alamosa or down north. We are, we are pretty low. And so we've kept the previous rates the same for the last two years. We need to go ahead and increase them. I can't have, um. Sick people, six people. Sick are calling in because they're tired for just not being able to handle the flick. Sick are calling in because they're tired for just not being able to handle the flipping of rooms and such. Um, some of the parties as, as Stephanie has said. Take a lot of extra work, some we have found, you know, are giving alcohol to minors that shouldn't. Be in there. And you know, then you've got vomit in the bathrooms. Or at least we hope they make it to the bathrooms. And so, um, it's. You all ought to just walk through there sometime, we see a ton of cars in the parking lot and just see what activities are going on inside there, so. Um, Stephanie and her team have done a great job this year. It's been a hard year, it's been a big, a big growing year. And, um. We'll see if. This. Doesn't, I mean, we'll probably get some pushback because there'll be some people who'll say it's too expensive. But we've still had people this last year saying. You're not charging me enough. And one of those is even the Crane Festival, saying, you know, for what we get. From what you all are providing us. You know. You need, it has a higher value to it, so. Um. We looped and shoot, um. Stephanie worked hard with coming up with this and. See how it works out.
And in reality, we have booked a lot of our twenty twenty-four events already. So really we'll see a difference in this in twenty twenty-five when we start booking our twenty twenty-five events. A lot of our weddings and quinceañeras book a year in advance, and so those would have already been booked at the twenty twenty-three pricing. So just to keep that in mind as you're looking at where our budget actually is and where our revenue actually is. Thank you.
You, Stephanie. Done, Unida?
We are done. So I would just ask that council, um. Would approve with the resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen? For the twenty twenty-four fee schedule?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. Resolution of the City of Montevista updating appendix two dash F. Be scheduled for the City of Montevista.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution two zero two three dash fifteen. Resolution of the City of Montevista updating appendix two dash F. Be scheduled for the City of Montevista, is there any more discussion? Unida?
Councilor Howard?
Yeah.
Councilor Locke?
Hi.
Councilor Lawrence?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segala?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Hi.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. For the twenty twenty-four be scheduled for the City of Montevista.
Okay, move to ordinance nine two four, second and final reading. Um, ordinance designating areas of activities of state interest. As stated in. HB ten forty-one. Codified in CRS. Twenty-four dash six five. One dash two zero one one concerning the export water for the sixth county geographical area of San Luis Valley. Of South Central Colorado and adopting guidelines for admini- administration. Mister Farish.
Mayor, members of the council. Um. This is the final reading on this ordinance and just for the benefit of, uh, perhaps some of the audience, because we know. Exactly what this is about, this is a joint effort. Between the six counties and the various municipalities in San Luis Valley to. Place some controls on efforts to. Export water out of the San Luis Valley as joint planning effort and a joint board, um. And similar, um. Ordinances, uh, under the, uh, House Bill ten, ten forty-one. Which, um, goes through an entire analysis, including. Environmental analysis, uh, highway, uh, uh, traffic analysis and so forth. Uh, many different aspects of, uh, exporting any water and what it would do to the economy. So this has been in the making for some time. Um. And, uh, the, uh, counties, my understanding is that all the counties have. Adopted this, uh, and the municipalities are in the process of adopting it also, um. When it first came out, as I mentioned before. It was only the counties that were looking at this and doing it, and, um, we made suggestions that the municipalities be. Included and the cog board decided that was a good idea. Um. There are three components to the effort. One is the IGA intergovernmental agreement. Between, uh, the, um. Counties and the municipalities to work together on this. Um, and that has been, uh, passed. Um. And then the second component is this ordinance that designates matters of state interest. Um, when we read this on the first reading, there was, uh, one suggestion by, uh, Councilor Rens, so. Uh, I had her go back and get a transcript of, of what was said there, and I'll just point it out because I don't think you want me to. Read unless I, you want me to read the whole entire ordinance again. But, um. This was down in, um. We put it under section four, which, uh, stated. A major domestic water treatment system or a municipal and industrial water project. That will not export directly or as a component of another project, any water whatsoever from a joint planning area. Shall not be considered an export of water. For the purposes of this agreement. So that was your comment, Councilor Rens. Um, so that's inserted into the, uh, ordinance itself. This isn't the total end of this because. Uh, what we've got to do now is work out the, uh, rules and regulations. And that's going to be a different issue, I think, because there are a lot of things in there that I've made. The, um. Town staff aware of, uh, and probably some of it that I've made you aware, it needs to be worked out, that would be, uh. Could be very onerous upon town staff if it's, uh. If it became an issue for the municipality trying to handle a, uh. A hearing of this sort, uh, of export. So we'll be working on that in the future, and I think we've got a cog meeting coming up next week. That's going to address some of the comments that I had about that probably too. So, uh, this is before you for a final reading at this point, do you have any questions? Not. Let the, please the council file reading.
Make a motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-four on second file reading. In order that submitting areas of activities of state interest as the House Bill one zero four one. In fact, it's CRS to report its five. One dash two one one concerning the export of water. The sixth county geographical area of the San Luis Valley. And adopting the guidelines for administration.
Backing. And moved in seconded to approve ordinance nine two four on second final reading. Ordinance designated, designating areas or activities of state interest as stated in House Bill ten. Forty-one and the Congress, there is twenty-four six five. One dash two zero one one concerning the export of water from the sixth county geographical area. Of the San Luis Valley of South Central Colorado and adopting guidelines for administration, is there any more discussion? Unida?
Councilor Howard?
Hi.
Councilor Locke?
Hi.
Councilor Lorenz?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Segala?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Hi.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty-four on second and final.
Yeah.
Very good. I will move to contracts, agreements and leases. Award of RFQ for generators located at Sky High.
Good evening, young council. Um, tonight before you is a. Memorandum asking for council to approve us to enter into. Uh, negotiations with, uh, a company. To start looking at backup power generator system for the Sky High complex. Um, this is slightly different than what you guys had normally see, we normally go out for a request for a proposal. Which will have budget figures in it, um. This one was done as a request for qualifications. We wanted to see which firms had the best qualifications to provide us. A backup generator that. Will fit the needs of the Sky High complex, um. So what we're asking tonight is for your. Approval for us to go ahead and enter into negotiations to determine a budget. For those generators. And then the package to get power to. The facility, um, this is very similar on our multimodal grant for C dot. We did the same process. Um, C dot requires you to go out for a request for qualifications, you cannot. Base your decisions on budget. You base it on qualifications and then you go into the budget, it frees us. At, if you guys approve this, it does free us up, so we can actually do what's more. Um, classified probably as a design build. Or you can actually ask the contractor to, hey, we're thinking this. Is this going to cost us more, is it going to cost us less, and they can bring in their thoughts of how to do it and, and hopefully save us some money. So. I will open it up, I mean, there's a memo there, um, we did have four, um. Companies, uh, we had Valley Electric. Colorado Standby, Burghrath and Associates with Canty Electric. Benko Electric and ET Tower, those were all four, um. Bidders that. Were on this and all four of them met the minimum qualifications. As a group, this was evaluated by DJ, myself and Stephanie. Um, we felt that Colorado Standby, that is all they do is backup generation. Um, would they had the biggest. In the amount of expertise that we felt. Across the board that would probably give us the best quality product, so. Um, we would like to approve, have council approve us to move forward. With negotiations with. Colorado Standby. And I'll open it up, questions?
So I have an issue here, you know.
What's up?
So. Do we have a specification of what we're asking? Or are we going to negotiate with the contractor? And let them tell us what they're going to do?
The, we have a general idea, but we don't have a concrete specification as to what we. Need. We do want their expertise to look at the system. And look at how it was previously wired because. It's, it's wired right now for generation on the, um. Conference side, but not on the event side. So we need to have that expertise to come in to look at it and determine if we're going to need two generators. Or if one generator could do everything, how to size it, how to properly locate it. And that's kind of what we want from this, and we want the ability to utilize their expertise. Because I don't think any of us, I'm not an expert in generators, and I'm not comfortable. Saying this is what size we need for. For Sky High, it hasn't been in use enough. But fully know the KV requirements at this point. But they can look at the stuff that's in there and we're, I mean, Stephanie can attest. She's already finding some things after a few years of being in there that aren't. Quite where she wants it.
Right.
And I think we get to do this probably once.
By doing this, will you be getting the expert advice? Of that, of only that one company?
Yeah.
And then they'd be giving you a bid?
Based on that.
Based on that.
Correct.
So this is a, uh, you know, engineering contract, I mean, you're asking for. To negotiate with this company. To design and install?
It would be a design and install, a design build, yes. Because the generators, they would, they would source that, they don't actually make the generators. So it'd be there as back like what they're comfortable with and based on the sizing and the sum of their experience.
Maybe I'm just not understanding, so basically you, you've chosen one company. To come in and tell you what we need. Give you a price and then we go forward with that. You're not getting a second opinion, not getting any sort of.
If we, well, i- it frees us up, if, if they come back with a price that are suggestions that we're not comfortable. It gives us the ability to go to the next company because we have them ranked.
But how you can evaluate that if you say you don't have any expertise on that?
We, I think we have enough based on using. Some of the previous. Materials from the, the build of Sky High. That we have a general idea, but I'd like to have somebody help us with getting it. Neck down and, and the caveat to that is if we go in and we say we need X. Then that's what the contractor. Is only going to provide us. And even if they think it's the wrong size, we're obligated to stick with that one thing because that's how we bid it. This gives us a little flexibility that if they say. Well, I know your bid said you need a hundred KV generator, that's not going to be big enough. It's just for argument's sake, um. That you need, you need a six hundred KV generator. Um, and this is what it's going to do, or you know, natural gas is probably not the best option for you. You need to look at something. Propane, decent fire. Those are the areas that we have some negotiation ability to talk about. You know. It's so. And for, at least in my opinion, I think it gives us a little more flexibility to get the best product that we can. So it's a request for qualification. It is only qualification, there is no cost at this time. And then when they. Make their proposal, then it goes for. So, so we already have grants that we've applied for and received for, this is for the emergency operations. So we already have those costs, so we haven't a budget necessarily, but we don't. We need to see where everything fits in and that's where the two goes. But it gives us the option to start negotiating and try to use their expertise. To whittle those costs down so we don't make mistakes. And we still have approval if. Still, you guys still have to approve the budget when it comes. Right, that time we can get second opinion. Right. Wish, right? Right. And if you're, if anything in it, I mean. You know. Counselor Howard, of course, has more experience doing some of this stuff than I would, so your expertise would be somebody that I would definitely lean on. Um, and see how things go, and if something just doesn't seem. Right, that's where as a counselor you just say, no, that's not where we want to go.
Well, as long as we have an opportunity to. We in on the final result.
You will have a, you have a way in on the final result. Always. So this is just the preliminary to at least get us into the negotiation stage. The difference between this one and why it's coming to you and not the MOF is I already had a budget assigned. On the MOF, and then when we entered in negotiations, which you guys approved with. KLJ, um, their bid came in lower. Than what my engineer's estimate was, so it was already under budget from the get-go. So we're under budget on the MOF grant. Before anything's ever actually started. And that's the, that's the good thing about what we're asking to do. Is it gives us the best chance to put the best bang for our dollar out there.
Maybe I'm not understanding, but I, I'm. A little uncomfortable with this. Just going with one company was, I, 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 I get that we can, we can go back and say, no. But we've got nothing, there's no comparison, there's no. That, I mean, there's just nothing, we're just saying. Okay, we're going to go with this company, you're going to tell us what we need, and we're going to tell you if we like your price, and if we don't. Then we've spent all this time doing this and now we're going to go with this company. You're going to tell us what we need, okay, we don't like what you're doing either. What, or, or we do like what you're doing, or we liked what we, what these first, first people were doing first and then. You know, they don't want to go back to that bid because prices have gone up or whatever. So I, I just, I mean, just not comfortable.
Well, Councilwoman Locke, what is it then that you want? Because this is the process as far as. Because this is the process as far as we put it out to bid. We said, tell us what you know and what you can give us, and based on that analysis. My three employees said, we like the qualifications of this company the best. To help guide us because we aren't the expertise experts. And they and they'll help us make that decision. And then ultimately make a recommendation to you of you five to say.
And all of, all of the companies had an opportunity to do a walkthrough with Sky High. So they're not coming into the project site unseen. They have the information on our utility bills. They've been in Sky High, they've seen the electrical system, they've seen where everything is. They've seen the site, they've walked, they they talked. Um, they talked about our needs and what we're looking to do ultimately. So they all have the basis information. Unfortunately, sometimes when you go into bid, so that the other item, if like a street project. I admit it, this is how it is. Every one of those items are very specific. Each contractor bids based on their rate structure, whatever that is. And then we still pick not necessarily the lowest, but the lowest responsible. This, there is no negotiation, it's a lump sum of five hundred thousand dollars, and that's it. Doesn't go down, it goes up. If something changes and they find something underground, it changes. What we're trying to do is eliminate as many of those changes in the forefront. Than doing it on the backside where it costs us money.
Yeah, and yet I could agree with, you know, awarding the. It's coming along is when they're done with their recommendation, we have a chance. We see what they, you know, what their proposal is, what the costs are.
And we can do that, if we can, we can structure this, if you, if this would make council feel better. We could structure it where they give us their stuff. And then we have to keep their cost proprietary, it has to be proprietary. And then if you feel you need that, then we can go out to bid with their specs and see where the other contractors come in. But we would have to pay them in that outside fee to basically engineer the system.
I feel better just with that.
I would too.
So it is possible.
Thanks. I mean, I, it it's a complex. Situation.
Right.
At Sky High, I get it.
So, under those terms, if we were to do it that way. Would council want that company excluded from being able to bid?
No, I wouldn't. I, I mean. When they get done with the recommendation that we can. You know, and such you have a specification or of of what we want, and where it is, and we can bid that to other companies and. And I I don't see any reason, you know, that somebody else couldn't, that they couldn't bid on it also. Pretty personal.
Cause that's, that's sometimes how it is, but yeah, if if council wants it, that would, we can structure it as a twofold. Do a design first with them.
Do a design.
You'll come back with that proposal. With their design costs are way out of line.
Oh, uh, can I bring you back? So here's the thing, I can bring you back to design, let council review it. But I will not advertise the costs. Because that would, that would give everybody an unfair.
Go back to the company and ask them for a proposal to do the design.
Okay, I will do that.
That's, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. Good. We will do that.
Do I need a motion with that or is it not? Do that motion? Trouble? Um. Proving bid for Norman S. Wright Mechanical Equipment Corporation for big ass fans. For the Alco Conference and Event Center.
I mean, Council, G T N L tag team this one. Um, so as you know, we've had some issues with the cooling in the event center. Um, so we spoke with Mark Burgraff, who was the engineer for the building throughout the design process. Um, and talked about several different options. Um, at this time, we feel like adding, and excuse my language, it is their actual name. Adding big ass fans would be the best option to get some type of airflow into that event center during the summer. When it gets extremely, extremely hot in there. Um, so we've spoken with a rep from Big Ass Fans as well as Mark Burgraff has kind of helped us through this process. To make sure we're getting the correct number of fans, the correct size of fans in order to best accommodate what we need in that spacing. Um, so in your packets, I believe, is the quote that we've received so far. Um, we did have a meeting with both Mark and the rep from Big Ass Fans today. Um, to see if there was any possibility of any discounts to lower that pricing just a little bit. Um, especially since it's end of the year, you know, give us a little holiday discount, a small government discount, something. Um, to see if we can accommodate that a little bit better. Um, we can go over some of the specs for that, um, if you'd like. Based off of where our lights are, the sound acoustical panels up top. As well as having a good distance from the walls and from each other, from each fan. Um, they've determined that the eighteen foot fans would be the best option and to have six of them throughout the building.
Throughout the event center.
Yes.
So, so these fixed fans are like up on the ceiling?
Uh huh, yes.
And they, and they can be can speed controlled, so that.
More air west here.
Yeah, and, um. And they said like for summer, you're gonna wanna higher speed, for winter, you have a slower speed. And so how it circulates, they care that, uh. Swamp coolers were undersized for what we're using the events in for. And so, Mark had come back with saying, we want. And he's suggesting we put in air conditioning. And I said, at this point, no way, I mean, I just don't think that we can, um. Just the whole expense of the electric bill. And, you know, events in the winter time that still need air conditioning. Because there's so many people in attending an event. So we wanna try the fans, but the quote that you've had is only for the fans. We've got it, uh, so it's at seventy thousand, whatever. On top of that then, it still has to be engineered. Um, the electrical. The mechanical side, because it's gonna take, um, you know, how much steel is it gonna take? To put a two hundred and seventy-five pound fan up on the roof. While.
On ceiling.
On ceiling, yeah, thank you. That. And so, you know, you gotta look at this thinking that it's probably in addition, and we're guessing. Maybe in another thirty-five thousand on top of this, on top of the price of the fans.
Why are we bidding, bidding out the fans before we know what it's gonna take to put a mask?
I have a little bit of a budget left over this year that I would like to get allocated for this instead of losing it.
Yeah, but if we find out it's gonna take a hundred and fifty thousand. To rework it, then. It doesn't work, we gotta know it's gonna work first before we put fans in.
Well, everybody is confident the fans will work.
Are they competent, the structure is set up to handle sixteen, two hundred and fifty pound pans?
Yes, Mark, so that the, the main, main bones of the facility can do that. Um, the capacity within the electric boxes is already there. And so, but you know, those are pretty high ceilings that we've got to get up to. We ask.
Unless you do weigh?
Two, like two hundred and seventy-five pounds.
So they don't weigh much, do they?
They what?
They don't really weigh that much.
Oh, okay.
And we're not talking with two thousand pounds here, with two hundred and fifty pounds, two hundred, three hundred, less than three hundred pounds.
Three hundred pounds times six.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
But they're not all on one spot.
No, no, they'd be spread out, no. And we ask if they were basketball proof. You know, kids are in there playing or we've got games going and they showed a little video of. People actually throwing balls at them. Um, they come with a good, a good warranty. Um, industry wise, these are really a, a solid product.
They're top of the line, industry wise.
What do they think about the retrofitting, the internal structure they have to put in and now to?
So.
And then they're gonna have to cut chunks out of the ceiling.
No, no.
Um, the only thing would be is possibly just putting a piece of steel. Between the trusses, just to anchor them in, you can do it that way. And then the condo would do up and fire too.
A lot of the potato plants have them. And then they're not that ready, like a seven and a half, which is having more sparring all the, they're not, they're not that big.
And we, what, what we'd like is for you to go ahead and. Make a motion for us to continue negotiating the price of the fans. So we can go ahead and get them ordered before the end of the year. And we're gonna have to do a full R F P for the electric and, uh. Contract, uh, and switch installation and such.
So moved.
Got it.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
What's the voltage on this guy out?
I think, what's, you know, the voltage?
Voltage of the fans?
No, it, it.
Is it four eighty volt? Four eighties going into the.
When you step down.
And then it steps down and, and so the fans are two oh eight.
Yeah.
Are they, they're two oh eight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you might hit four hundred and eighty volt, you have to, you should go in the.
Like a little bit?
Mark suggested we go with the two oh eight. Well, if you got a fan speed controller, which you have to have anyway, you already said it. Now to be a D, if you bring in four eighty, you can send four eighty out there, and you would have a lot cheaper later. A lot.
Well, they're getting. Whatever power they are, whatever voltage they are.
So we have a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded, uh. Prove Gigi and Stephanie to negotiate the price.
Yeah.
Of the. With Norman S. Wright Mechanical Equipment Corporation for the big ass fans. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Luck?
I am.
Counselor Lorenz?
Go ahead.
Mayor Proton Sibylla?
All right.
Mayor Becker?
All right.
Motion carries to approve contract negotiation for the big ass fans with. Norman S. Wright Mechanical Equipment Corporation.
Receiving approval from, from financial reports, October financial report, Anita?
Um, I, uh, included the financial report for the end of October in your packet, um.
I get nothing, sorry.
That's okay, did you wanna help me with the presentation or I can just go through the slide?
It's getting there.
Oh, wait. We've completed, um, eighty-three percent of the fiscal year through the end of October. The cash balance in the main checking account in the general fund was two million nine hundred twenty-four thousand. The water fund had five hundred and eighty-five thousand, the sewer fund had eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Revenue and excess of expenditures in the general fund was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Water fund a hundred and twelve thousand, sewer fund three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The, uh, expenditures percent of the approved budgeted amounts, general fund was eighty-two percent. Water fund sixty-nine and sewer fund forty-one percent. The accounts comparative account receivable on the balance sheet between, um. This year and twenty twenty-two, there was a slight increase of twenty thousand in the general fund. For receivables, water fund had a decrease of thirty-five thousand. Which was, which is related to the reconciliation of the term slings. And I did adjust the bad debt account that was way big. Um, the sewer fund had a slight increase of thirty-eight hundred dollars. The accounts payable comparative. Um, the general fund had an increase of thirty-five thousand. Which, um, is related. To the purchases for the land, use code revision in the boundary survey, we, we had a site, Sky High. And then we had some vehicle and equipment repairs. The water fund increased about twenty-eight thousand, and that was related to the purchase of some. Water meter equipment, and then they accrued compensated expenses. Sewer fund also increased about twenty-six thousand. And that was related to professional services for the wastewater design and the accrued compensated expenses. The comparative for the revenues, um, general fund this year. Increased about two hundred and thirty thousand over last year, which is. The majority, well, hundred ninety-seven thousand in tax revenues and then. Um, we had a hundred and fourteen thousand in a combination of interest and. Um, donations, police grants, refunds on expenditures. The water fund, um, had an overall increase of two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And that was related to the use of the ARPA funds for the generator purchase and. The Dennis Street Pod Project that we did, and that was about two hundred and eleven thousand. And then, um, interest and miscellaneous was earnings and water rights lease revenue of about seventy-nine thousand. The sewer fund had an increase of about three hundred and ninety thousand, and that's related to. Um, state grants that we received, um, to three hundred thousand in service charges. Which was, is because of the increased rates, um, in. Higher earnings on interest and a little bit higher loans to work. The general property tax revenue, um, has pretty much followed the same pattern over the months and the years. Um, May, we had a slight increase, June was a slight decrease. Then it leveled out in September and October. On August and through October, and now it's kind of in line with what it was the previous year. The sales tax revenue, um. Hit the same point as the previous years in June, but then it increased in July and August. Met the same point in September, um, and now it's kind of got a little bit of an increase in October. Hopefully, follow us through. The sales tax revenue, um, not quite as consistent. Um, it, the pattern levels up in April and May. And increased in June and July and decreased in September, and now it's going back up in October. So overall, the total tax revenue of all of those plus some of the franchise and occupational tax, um. Shows an increase this year, pretty much, um, meeting the same level in September. But, um, we're still above the past years in the month of October. The expenditures comparative, um. This year, the, um. Our expenses are increased over last year. Um, and I've gone over the expected expenses in the past reports, um. And unexpected, you know, the library damage and building improvements. Um, this month, we also had, um, expenses for the land use code and the boundary survey. Monthly comparison for the general fund revenues, um, averages about four hundred and thirty-two thousand a month. The general fund expenditures, um. Average about four hundred and nineteen thousand. The, um, budget comparison. The um budget comparison. Pretty much um we're about one percent under budget. As of the end of October, so so far we're still managing okay. Even considering the expenses for the building improvements. Um, we ended the month of October with a current ratio of three point eight six to one. We um have seven point six three months of uh general fund operating expenses and the unassigned funded allowance. Any questions?
Will be pretty steady at that seven month?
No, hopefully we got two more months to go and then just spend the money like crazy.
Cause everybody's buying Christmas lights.
Um, I would just ask that you approve the presentation of the finance.
So.
That good.
They moved in second to approve October financial reports. Any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
I'm.
Counselor Lorenz? Mayor Proton, Sabilla?
All right.
Mayor Becker?
Why?
Motion carries to approve the October financials.
Yeah, I did wanna mention, um, we had a surprise just uh yesterday, the day before Carlos Fiver came in. Um, and uh part of the funding for the building of the Sky High Complex included some funds from a trust called the Reed Trust. And they were waiting for the settlement of the estate. And it was settled. She brought in five hundred more, five hundred thousand more dollars to put on the purchase, on the lease purchase loan. So you guys will probably be able to pay that off, I mean with out cult donation next year. The building in that construction will probably be paid off next year. So that's like um, the loan was originally made for ten years. And it's gonna be paid off in three. So that, that's pretty good. And you'll be able to see that, you know, in a couple more months when you get to see December reports, but I wanted to let you know, cause I thought that was pretty cool.
We'll go to staff proposal, reports of action, city clerk.
You see me, Ken Mayor and Council?
Are you gonna need a weebie?
No, yes, you don't have to let her go, she's, that way we wanna keep her with me. Tell her she can't go. Um, so I was asked to present to you a twenty twenty-three year end report. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for letting me to continue serve as your city clerk. In the city clerk's office, um, we continue to do day-to-day operations as normal. Um, I have promoted my deputy clerk to my court clerk. So she has taken over the courts completely. Um, I, she now does all of the courts on a monthly basis and she's working with her city attorney and with the judge to make sure that the courts run smoothly. Um, so she has been promoted to the court clerk, which um has given her she feels very important and she's given her a need to thrive and she, I think she's doing a really good job. Um, you'll see in the next couple of months, she's putting together some new plans for you all, so hopefully that'll work out. Um, this year, um, we have started a hybrid meeting. Um, so council is now in person and we have also done where we opened up Zoom to all of the public. Um, Zoom wasn't something that anybody did until COVID. And then we went from in-person to strictly Zoom and then yes, mayor went to Zoom and then we came back to in-person and then we determined that a lot of people still like Zoom. So um with the direction of the city manager and help from IT. Um, we've made it successful where we now include where the public can join us by Zoom. Which has made it, it's, it's made it easier for a lot of the people who don't live here. You know, like Curtis with waste management, um, he was able to zoom in. Um, Jeff, our water attorney, he doesn't have to travel down, he can zoom in, so it's helped a lot with that aspect. So we continued, we continue to do um our business license. And dog registrations, vendor permits, um, vendor permits were up quite a bit this year. Um, thanks to the holiday bazaar. Um, we had a hundred and twenty, ready? Vendors at the holiday bazaar this year. So our vendors license were up quite a bit this year. Um, also with food trucks, so we had a lot of food trucks come into Montevista this year. We currently don't have a food truck policy. So I am working on a food truck policy to bring before you within the coming months. So hopefully we'll have something, a guideline that we can put together. Where our food trucks can go, where it won't impact other restaurants that we currently have in the community. Um, where it'll be a thriving business for our food trucks as well that wanna come into our community. We end the year with forty-five new businesses in Montevista. That includes storefront businesses, home-based businesses and food trucks. And that also includes fifteen new businesses that don't currently reside in Montevista but deliver to Montevista. So those businesses don't have to hold, um, they don't have to pay for a business license, but they have to hold a business license. I require them to actually just have a business license, but the Senate bill has, that was passed last year. They don't have to pay for a business license. But they still have honored my request for them to hold a business license. So we did end with forty-five new businesses this year. Liquor license, um, twenty twenty-three was a true hangover. Um, we had a lot of modifications to our liquor licensing this year. Um, we had one business that applied for outdoor dining permit. And that um was approved to serve liquor outside of their premises. Um, that was Rain Brews. Kinda carried over from COVID, um, so COVID, they had a temporary permit. When liquor division incorporated the new liquor laws. Um, Rain Brews did apply for a permanent permit to serve alcohol outside their premises, which incorporates that little section just outside their business. We had one new liquor license this year and one transferred. Municipal courts, we had a total of two hundred and thirty-one cases and that was as of December seventh. So as of today, we have two hundred and thirty-one cases. That is down about a hundred and fifteen cases from last year. Our revenues, unfortunately, our revenues are down this year. Um, our revenues so far, we've collected twenty-seven thousand sixty-three dollars in fines and fees and two hundred and fifty dollars in restitution. I believe our revenue is down this year because uh the judge allows for useful public service in lieu of fines and fees. So instead of a person paying the fines and fees, the judge allows them to do useful public service. Um, something that my deputy clerk and I have been discussing is possibly getting with our city attorney, our city manager and the department heads and maybe in the coming year discussing having more of a city useful public service incorporated. So if we issue useful public service, it's being put back into the city versus outside the city. So it's something that we'd like to discuss further in the upcoming years with city manager, city attorney, the judge and you all. Um, as your PIO officer, I continue to update your website and your Facebook page, um, I don't know if you've, any of you have checked out the website lately. Um, but if you look at your website, you'll see that the Facebook page is down incorporated with the website. So if you go to the face or the website, any and all updates to Facebook also appears on the website. So stories, anything that we do on the website also goes on the Facebook, radio. Bob Richards and his wife has been absolutely wonderful. Anytime I have a PSA that needs to go out, public service announcement. I give him a call and within hours, they have it out for me. So I continue to do that and that concludes.
Thank you. Public Works, Mr. Rance.
Yes, a couple of things, so kinda picking off on some of the stuff that took place earlier with waste management. Um, I also sit on the landfill um board. And we are going to be increasing prices this year. Um, current um compacted trash is nineteen thirty-six and it's gonna be going up to twenty-one thirty. Um, same reasons that um Curtis was talking about, fast doing businesses just going up. So we're having to read those, uh, we did do some adjustments on the residential side. Um, we've added, um, it used to be six dollars and seventy-five cents a cubic yard. And then for car loans, up to half, half a yard is three dollars and fifty cents and then over uh, a half yard is an additional three dollars and fifty cents. And we won't actually start measuring until you get to a cubic yard. Um, so hopefully save a little bit of money for, for residents. Um, the other things, um, we did here, at least in the department. Um, we are in our sweeping mode for our final sweeping of the year. Um, our goal is to get through the entire town before we get in snow. Um, I did go ahead and put a notice out in the newspaper and on the radios that we are sweeping. And then we asked Anita to go ahead and add on a daily basis where the sweeper will be the next day. So you can kind of follow it as we track from the east side of town through the west. So kind of be able to move the cars and get the curb lines a bit better. So um just wanted to make sure that citizens know to, to watch the website and Facebook pages, cause those are posted on a daily basis. That's where the sweeper will be the next, what be. Other than that, staff has been pretty much year-end closeouts, business as usual, Christmas decorations. Always do, it's Christmas decorations. We're gonna do another one on Monday, I'm gonna finish that up. Um, the only other thing that really for council is kinda need a nod. Usually on the twenty-second of December each year, we authorize people to start running water for frozen meters. And we boost that from five thousand gallons to fifteen thousand gallons. And I just kinda need to nod if that is something that you do wanna consider. And that's it, and if anything else, uh, we'll give them for questions. If not, thank you.
Tell everybody about the airport.
Oh. I'll leave that for Gigi. Um, so.
Whatever.
So um, last week we had a grand opening for our new fuel system at the airport. Um, it was really kind of a surprise, we, we kinda invited the pilots and and some of the folks and it turned into a fly-in, we had folks from Pagosa Springs, One of Vista. Creed, a couple of folks from Center flew in. Uh, we actually had an airshow out there during the thing, there was four planes from Pagosa that kinda do that. And they did a little flyover for us with smoke in the whole nine yards, it was really nice. Um, there was probably fifty, easy fifty pilots and people out there. Um, we had to go get extra burgers, cause we ran out of burgers, so it was much bigger than what we thought. Um, but it was a nice addition, the new fuel system, twelve thousand um, low lead um fueling tank out there with new pumps and everything. Prices are gonna try to keep low, so been a good addition to our.
Sure, alright, thanks. EB.
Good evening, Mayor Council, um, I don't really have much, um, been kind of busy, we had a couple of standoffs this week. Which is weird, we never have, I'm, one lasted seven hours, it was seven hour barricade and you just wouldn't come out after seven hours of a little pepper, uh, pepper spray, he decided he'd come out and took him into custody without any incident, but uh it was kind of, kind of intentional bit, and then the very next day we had another one, like another two hours. Um, took us to get the guy out of the house before he uh, he had a bunch of warrants and stuff. We've also, we've really been working some pretty significant drug cases again, uh, Michael and Zeke have really been hitting those hard. Um, we had one, we arrested a guy Tuesday, uh, Tuesday, Thursday. It's the third time in two months that we've arrested him with like significant amounts of distribution amounts of fentanyl. And uh finally, be, and we've talked about this and you know my frustration with our, with our bond reform here in Colorado, I mean literally it was like forty-five hundred dollar bond, which ten percent was four hundred and fifty dollars. So you're caught with all these uh felony crimes and like literally the highest level of drug crimes you can and they were bonding out on four hundred and fifty dollars. So this time, um, Michael put all that as affidavit and the judge set the bond at a hundred and fifty thousand cash immediately, so hopefully, hopefully that'll uh get his attention, but I doubt it, um, unfortunately. Um, we did have a uh, uh unfortunate event in the back parking lot, one of our cars, we parked it on a Friday night or Saturday night. And like thirty-two hours later, watching the cameras, it just poof catches on fire and burns completely down and scorched the side of two of our other ones. Uh, two of the officers were out, it was our canine vehicle and it um, as far as Pat could figure out, it was just, must have been a short in there and it was smoldering. And the air pressure got right and the humidity got right and it just completely engulfed it, completely burnt. Uh, just destroyed it, it completely destroyed that vehicle. Uh, we went back to make sure it wasn't arson or something like that and now it just catches on fire and. What's that?
Electric car.
But it was unfortunate, which brings me to my next thing, um, so we're getting a, a pretty good this was a vehicle that was actually donated to us, it was our canine vehicle, uh, through the canine fund. So we're getting a pretty good insurance payout on that as well as I have some cost savings, so I'm gonna ask you to allow me to go get a good used SUV that we can use and it'll probably be about thirty, thirty thousand since it's over twenty-five, I need your approval to do that. So I've got, I've got plenty of cost savings in, in, in the budget. And then along with the insurance payout, that I'll have plenty of money too, but I can apply on going with thirty thousand or right around that area right in there, so I'm gonna ask you for a, uh, approval to do that. That's it.
So.
So.
So moved and seconded to approve. Chiefs, you'll find that never used police car.
Let's just hope it doesn't burn.
Any more discussion?
Do you need a nod or a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Anita?
Hi.
Counselor Locke?
I'm.
Counselor Lorenz?
Hi.
Mayor Proton, Sabilla?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Alright.
Motion carries to allow Keith to spend up to thirty thousand dollars for a new used police car.
Thank you. And then last thing, I don't know if you've had the opportunity today to attend that. And then last thing, I don't know if you've had the opportunity today to attend that uh, Pearl Harbor uh, uh, event. That was absolutely amazing. Um, just to be in the room with that guy, um, with uh, Staff Sergeant Blake. Uh, you know, hundred and two years old, gonna be a hundred and three in a little over a month. And he is, it was just incredible to be part of that and to got pictures with him and stuff. So it was uh, that was pretty, pretty awesome event. So that's all I got. If you guys have any questions for me. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
You have one more video. We got a grant through the Laura Foundation. So Saturday, they're doing a uh, uh, shop with cop, first responder event. Um. So we got like identified, had the schools identify twenty kids who were like really in need of uh, gifts. So we're gonna meet with them on Saturday morning at Sky High and then we'll take them to Walmart. And then we'll pay for it and it's all through a grant. So that'll be kinda cool to do. Be the first time that we've done it, at least since I've been here. So. So that'll be cool.
That's like very cool. Thank you, Chief.
Take your tax exempt card.
Yes.
IT.
Good evening, Mayor Council, and thank you to Charles B. as usual. But this month, we've been so busy, more or less just in the background, trying to get everything up and running. But uh, we began the entire PD IDF, which is our little plaza over there on the PD side that hosts the networking equipment over there. We're currently redoing the entire PD side to try and bring up some of the noise on our network. I've been noticing some latency issues and just connectivity problems. We're hoping that this will rectify those issues and so far things seem to be going well and we're continuing that into this current month of December. We had a lockback here malfunctioning that was down for a couple of weeks as well. I was able to tear apart another old lock that we had and use parts from that one and repair that lock. So that lock is up and functioning again. We had the tower temp stick and hotspot go out over at the uh, radio, emergency radio tower, which is what our police use, is what the just emergency uh, agencies use in general. We have a temp stick and hotspot out there just to monitor the temperatures and everything, make sure the equipment doesn't get overly hot and save some function in order. We've installed a new plotter and printer for uh, our planning department. That is for DJ to do his mapping and everything. Hopefully it's good for his department as they've been struggling a little bit with the scanners, been at the front scanning all their maps and and we had a network outage, which caused a lot of things to go down. That was a quick fix as it was a UPS that went out. That UPS is in the process of being replaced, currently being kept on life support essentially. And I have achieved my B, BMR, BCP, DCP, VSphere eight certification, which is our entire background virtual environment.
Cool, good job.
Thank you, appreciate it. And that's all I have for report. Is there any questions?
Me, anybody? What was that acronym?
Uh, BMR, BCP, DCP, VSphere eight, which is our entire virtual environment. What those acronyms stand for? I don't know, they change constantly.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I won't leave me.
You as well. City manager.
Okay, so one of the things that Brandon was talking about was some rewiring over in the police department. One thing the chief didn't mention is that we got, got word that um, Fridays, one of their call centers, they have Chief and I went down there and it was just rows and rows of workstations. And so uh, with a, having a full staff in our police, in our PD right now, we were able to buy six matching workstations. So we added two. We'll get rid of the four we have, but we were able to buy them for a hundred dollars each. Which for new workstations is an incredible deal. So it's taking IT extra time to get that all wired up and, and get those set up. So it's gonna be nice. It's gonna look real good. Um. As you know, Anita has announced her retirement. And so I am gonna be doing finance director interviews this next week. So thank goodness, she said she'd stay on until we can get the person, you know, pretty comfortable with what we've got. Nita's done a great job in cleaning up some things that just need to be taken care of in the city. I think that, you know, we've had so much turnover in that department over the last five or six years. Twenty. But that um, I really applaud her for what she said. Now, don't start crying.
How many people were you there for?
It's um, very slim pickings out there.
Sure.
And we've advertised on the radio, we've advertised through other media venues. I think that for our size of the community where we advertise it and had a very fair rate, a range and um, it's gonna be pretty slim.
Good.
So. Uh, something else about the airport, since you got, we talked about it briefly. We got word, uh, this is the second time, maybe it's the third time. But the, through the state division of la, Department of Labor is the division of oil and gas regulations. And we have two businesses out at the airport that have their own fuel stations and they are both illegal. And so Rob and I are gonna have to meet and we'll get Jed, telephoric part fixed base operator involved and figure out the best plan to move forward that we we are going to have to tell these, these two companies, either you get rid of these oil, these um, fuel tanks and remediate your property or we're shutting you down. Which of course will come with some huge pushback from the agricultural committee. But the airport belongs to the city of Montevista. And we are responsible to make sure it stays in compliance. And so if this does not happen, we will be the one that gets fined. So it's, Rob told me about this when I first came on board two years ago. Um, we've kind of just pushed it aside and hoping that it'd go away a little bit. But the um, inspector is a local person. I saw him the other evening, um. He had a Scrooge mask on and I found out that he's the real thing. So. So we're gonna have to get that addressed after the first of the year. Um. So it's a few things. A couple of things coming up this week. Wednesday is our, is our employee appreciation holiday luncheon. You all are all invited. Please let us know if you can make it. It'll be at eleven-thirty at Scrumpy Moose. And we'll be handing out some appreciation awards and years of service and that sort of thing. So we hope you all will be there. Uh, Wednesday also is our one cent advisory board meeting where uh, we'll be giving them an update on where the one cent fundings have gone and, and where we're at for this time of year. So those are open to the public if anybody would like to, to attend those. That's Wednesday at five o'clock here at City Hall. And then Thursday, we have a work session with Will Dan and that's also at five o'clock. Will Dan, remember, is the contractor for the water meters. And so we're gonna be getting an update on that and how we'll move, move forward with the community. And my last thing is, um, my second year anniversary was last Tuesday. Uh, which means my contract expires, so I'm going home. So, so uh, the next meeting, um, we need to have that discussion and um, see what you guys want. So I'm gonna propose I do something similar that I did last year and just kind of prepare a year-end report for you all. And we're gonna go from there and needed to know if there was anything else that you'd like to have ahead of time.
Your contract.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. I'll send you my contract.
Five years, we discussed six years.
Never say never. So that's it. Um. My staff's doing great. Everybody's busy. Like, I thought that December would be a time to get caught up. And it's just more stuff coming, so. Thank you.
I want your input on the airport.
Okay.
Flying.
I, I was thrilled. Uh, Jed, you know, is a, is a pilot. And so he put it out for the, for his buddies, you know, with what's a real flying. And I, I didn't want, I didn't really want the general public there because I wanted it an opportunity for any of council that could attend to have that interaction time with some of the pilots and get their input. Uh, we have Jed also invited Sergeant School. They have a STEM program specifically towards aviation. So we probably had ten or twelve of those students out here, both male and female. And so that was fun. And they got, those kids got to talk to the pilots and look in the planes and I think a couple of them even got a, a free little ride up and about. And then um, I'm just really proud of, of what we've been able to do to help make some improvements out there. Besides the fuel farm, we've done some touch-up painting. We've done some landscaping. We're trying to get the darn fence project finished up and, and just bathrooms, restrooms have been updated and the new water heater furnace. And uh, what's the third one? Anyway, and though that was all primarily done with those federal funds that they received because of the cares. So. In good shape.
Yeah. Thank you, Gigi.
Thank you.
Council committee, city commission and council reports. Counselor Renz. Protem Segola.
Um. I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Um, I know that I probably won't be here next meeting cause I'll be out of town. Um, I mean, I know like last year, we didn't have, um, the second meeting in December for the council. So I'm not sure if that's what you guys are wanting to do again this year.
I, I think we did, didn't we? Cause we have to.
Did we have that one last year?
Because we have to approve, you have to approve our mill levy report so we can send it to that.
That's right, that's right.
The county.
So. So other than that, I'm good. Nothing else.
Our. I wonder the craft show, that was amazing. Compared to a year ago, at least according to somebody that I know. It cost me quite a bit of money.
And that's held by the chief of comms.
Yeah, I know, but still, I mean, it's, it's Sky High was great. Very saying. And that, I'm. Merry Christmas. Counselor Locke.
Thank you for the Merry Christmases and I will, will also wish you a happy Hanukkah that starts today for this evening. Um. But please remember, as people wish you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever they, seasons greetings, whatever they choose, they're giving you a kind greeting. It really doesn't matter what they say. They don't need to be corrected. They don't need to be chastised. Remember too, there are people in our community that are celebrating Hanukkah this week with heavy hearts. So I'd ask you to be kind in that respect as well. Don't have to have an opinion. Kindness is just kind. Um, other than that, I'm very proud of the way Montevista's going. I am so excited. I don't even have the words for it for this hotel. Uh, that's been a, a big deal. So I'm really excited about that. I am happy to hear we've had so many new businesses in the past year. That's a great way to close out a year. So just really proud of Montevista and happy to be here. That's all.
Thank you, Martha. Um, Craft Bazaar. I didn't get to see my money go, cause she went the day before. But that was amazing, uh, what they all put on, going out there briefly and could not believe the number of people that were there and the craft work. Holy smokes, man. There was some beautiful, beautiful work out there. The parade lights is great and the park, awesome. I like that big package over there by Sonic. That looks phenomenal. So thank you to the staff and everybody that worked so diligently to get this town lit up like it is. Yeah. It's really great. So we're almost there. One more year and it will be Christmas town, right? And with that, you know, just keep an eye on your neighbors. There's still the fine little heathens out there that keep dodging Chief and his department. So keep an eye on everybody and Merry Christmas. With that, we'll recess the meeting till December twenty-first, six PM. Here in Council Chambers.